I will add that myself. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you. First item is the discussion on a potential new bond for school construction in addition to the 4 million remaining from the original 2020, $83 million bond. Dr. Thornton.
Evening. If I could start with the second piece first, the 4 million conversation, and I'll be talking briefly about these two pieces and then turn it over to Megan Hevrela and Louis Torado to talk about this in more detail. Essentially, for the second piece, the 4 million, as you recall, the voters originally approved 83 million for Cumberland schools. We were given authority for reimbursement up to 79 million. The last four was not reimbursable. We did actually talk to folks at the state level and now we do understand it is reimbursable if we do some homework. It's called stage one, stage two applications. Getting that 4 million is really important. First, it's already approved by the voters. Second, reimbursable up to 64 percent. And we need the funds, quite frankly, to finish the jobs we started, whether it's at Ashton and Garvin. So that's part of the conversations that you'll hear about with Megan and Louis. The first piece, you see the phrase "new bond for school construction." That really was a conversation we really started a few months ago, looking at enrollment. As you know, I keep talking about enrollment trending up in Cumberland. You keep hearing stories about enrollment going down Rhode Island. It's not the case in Cumberland. We're going up. In your packets, you do have a new enrollment projection from NESDEC, came out last week. They did that for us. And just for review, on page five, if you had it in front of you, you're going to see, right now, they have our enrollment at around 46, 44. That's about 80 kids short, that's without the homeschoolers. But we're trending up, you know, 60, 80 kids a year on the projection, going up to over 5,000 kids in the out years. So they have us going up every year consistently. That's just enrollment, just from births and, you know, what they're seeing in our community. And that's exciting, but it's also something you have to plan for. We can't finish school construction and then have a capacity issue. That would be a problem. So that was really a conversation we started having with the mayor's office, with folks on Louis's team, Megan's team, talking about, you know, what are we looking at in all of our schools? We know in four out of the five schools, we have additions, whether they be cafeterias or DaVinci rooms or classroom wings, like at Ashton and Cumberland Hill. But in looking at BF Norton, as you know, the footprint is limited in what we can do. So that really started the conversation over, you know, what are some options we may have for BF Norton? And we'll talk more about that with Louis and Megan. So that's kind of the genesis of what brought us here to talk about first, the 4 million, what that would look like if we did that, went for that. And then, what if we went for a new bond? What would that look like? What does that entail? I'll add one more piece. We also know we have what I would call some unfinished business in the town. We have the high school roof, which has not been addressed. We have the vestibules in the middle schools. We have playgrounds at Ashton and Cumberland Hill and Garvin. So we have some things we knew that, you know, we hadn't, you know, quite addressed. So this talk tonight, we're hoping to capture all that in this conversation. So with that, I would turn it over to Megan, I think first, and then Louis to talk about some detail of what this could look like.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. Again, before I get started, I want to recognize Chris Devine and Andrew Torado, my son, who has been working on this presentation with us. I promised his mother I would do this, so I've complained. Yes. So this all got started in planning of the renovations that were scheduled to be done this summer at BF Norton. We had been meeting with the principal and their staff, and they wanted me to witness dismissal because they told me what a difficult situation they had with that. I was amazed about how difficult. And I know some of the staff is here tonight, and I was amazed how they conducted that with military precision. It really is amazing. But they have a really, really difficult situation. When I was witnessing that, I looked at the slope of the sidewalk grown from the street to the main entrance of the building, and I wondered if it was ADA accessible. It just looked too steep. The whole thing looked too steep. So with Dr. Phil, we contacted the Coalition on Disability. They came out, they verified that in fact it is too steep, and it doesn't meet the requirements. So then we started thinking about changing the front of the building to be the main entrance. We came up with, I think, some good designs, but it was a compromise. It was a compromise that, in the building, that you've had a number of compromises, starting with that the original building, the only thing that was left over from the original building is the cafeteria and the gymnasium. And they built that whole addition to match and connect to that. And that led to a number of compromises. It's got two levels in the interior. It's below sidewalk grade. And so along also the thinking of enrollment projections and the great news that you're having in your school district about increasing student population, we started to think about what else could be done. And so the idea is to address both of those issues in a new elementary school. A new elementary school that would be four tracks. So the number of, for example, first grades or second grades or third grades, you would have four first grades, four second grades, that's what we call tracks. The current plans provide for BF Norton to have two tracks plus two classrooms. This would almost double that capacity. That needs to be justified to the Department of Ed. So we just got the forecasting back. It confirms that indeed you're growing and expect it to keep growing. And the other thing that Wright now allows us to do is that the previous bond had the capacities of the buildings decided by loading each classroom to your full teacher contract, so to 25 students. That meant that at the end of this construction process, you would be at capacity, unable to accommodate for any additional students. What Wright lets us do now is go one or two students below the teacher's contract. So that automatically builds in some additional capacity. And so counting that and counting the enrollment increase that is projected, we're confident that we can justify having BF Norton as a four-track school. So what I'm going to show you is completely different in a process than what we typically do. We design buildings with meetings with you, with the facilities committee, with the school department, with the faculty. So this is more of a test fit. Does this concept fit in the site that you have? And with the understanding that we'll be back to you many times and look at many options of how to ideally do it. So, okay. Can you guys see, okay? Okay, so this is the existing building. The main street is here. Current, there's parking areas here, and the baseball field is located here. So one of the things that we want to make sure we address with the new design is that you want to separate bus drop-off from parent drop-off. So what we're proposing is that this area be the parent drop-off, right? They would get in queue and line and be able to have a lot of stacking. There'd be parking in between that, and they would have its own entrance and ADA parking. So if you look at a section through here, you're going to see that this area of the site is about one story above this area of the site. It slopes down. And if you look at a section, when you cut a section through the building, you would see that this is the lower level where the baseball field is now, and this is the higher level where the parking would be. So this is a section through our building, and the most economical way to design classroom wings for schools is to do them in three stories. It stacks everything up. It provides for a very economical way of doing it. The most economical way of doing spaces that have large spans, like cafeterias or gymnasiums, is to do them right on slab with nothing above them. And so that's what we're proposing to do here. The trouble is that three-story buildings are not ideal for elementary school students in that they have to travel the three floors. So ideally, you would enter at the middle floor. And so that's what we're proposing here, that from this upper drop-off area and really the main ADA access, this would be the entrance to the school. And we would enter, this is, it's down here. I'm going to share that with you in a minute. Okay, you would enter the middle floor. You're going to see this for a minute. Then the other axis is the bus drop-off axis. We would have our own drive, which would provide the bus to be able to stack up here. And you also have parking and drop-off for the kindergartens. They would be, they have to be on grade with the first grader, so that would be easy drop-off. You also have easy drop-off and connection to the kitchen. The other benefit of having, they call this Chevron parking for the buses, is that after the initial drop-off in the morning, this would be gated off, and this space could be snowplowed and used for play space during the day. We've looked at carefully the location of the existing playground, which is here. We would have the building pushed back to allow for playground areas here and here, and then you would be able to maintain that playground location. Okay, now I'll go on to the plans. Okay, so we mentioned parent drop-off, main entrance, visitor parking, main entrance, and you would enter here in the building. You would have the school administration and nurses. This would supervise visually that main entrance and parking area. The way that you want to design 21st century learning environments, it's in small educational groups. We call them houses, so we tried to put a cohort at the same grade in a house. So that's what we're proposing to do here. The ideal situation is that no house circulates through another house to get to the core spaces. So from this entrance, you would have the second grade cohort. It has the four classrooms. It has breakout rooms in between. It has a learning commons and a faculty plan room. That's a big component in this 21st century learning. And we would have a courtyard and then the other cohort for the third graders in a similar design. If you see, to get to the core spaces, which in this case would be the media center and the DaVinci rooms, they can go there directly. Then the upper floor would basically be reflective of that stacked up, and it would have the fifth grades and the fourth grades. Then the first floor, which is where the kindergartens and first grades would be, would have, as I mentioned, their own entrance. It would have an administration, maybe assistant principal's office might be down there to control that entrance. And then it would also have this main circulation here. I'm sorry, I'm trying, I know not all of you can see, but. A main entrance and circulation, which would have the access to the cafeteria and to the Another benefit of this layout is that this provides for great community access and use without entering and circulating for the school. So that's basically our presentation. Do you have any questions at this point?
I just want to make one small point. I don't think we should get too hung up on specifics of the drawings because this is more conceptual. We have a long process before we get into like where stuff is actually going to be. I can tell you, just from designing the renovation of BF Norton, those plans have changed several times just in the past year because of all the different problems.
Yeah, no, absolutely. As I mentioned, it's just a test fit, and that you need to have some reality that backs up the budgets that we're providing for you. That was the only.
Any questions?
There's a lot there. So I do have just a practical question, and Dr. Thornton, you may. How does this, with the $83 million bond, how does this, how much of an extra cost? Or is it too early to tell how much extra we're looking, or are we looking at extra or anything along those lines? Because I think when people see this, the taxpayers are going to be, how much is this going to cost us?
Part two of the numbers. If you want, you want the end first, then we'll hear the detail?
No, just you follow the sequence in which you're prepared to. Thank you.
So I think if there are other questions, that's part two.
Mr. Smith, do you have any questions on the project? Yeah, everything's going to be financial.
There's a lot of questions out there.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, you know, I'm looking at questions such as, two weeks ago at school committee, we were told we could absorb 400 students back in if they came back from BVP. Then we have the issue of BVP wanting to grow in the same area, and we're telling them no, that we, there's no bandwidth on Broad Street to manage this, yet we're going to double and go to track. So all of these things will, I know, fall out in questions, but.
Right, and quite honestly, my feeling has always been, I'm not responsible for BVP. But the redesign of this school and the bus traffic, the drop-off pickup traffic, is going to go a long way to helping the Broad Street traffic situation, I think. So, but Dr. Thornton, if you want to say anything about the finances first, or do we want to hand it over to Megan?
Just from Megan's segue, once again, she's going to try to frame for you the first of 4 million, and then what would the list price be for BF Norton and what the actual price, the net price would be for the project?
Right, and again, I think it's important to note that the finances are not, what we're going to vote on tonight is really just approving the application to ride for the work. So I think that's the important thing, but we will have a lot of answers.
Exactly, so just to clarify, right?
Right, for the stage one application, right.
Just to review, so this would be a stage one application tonight on agenda item number four, and if you said yes, they would do that homework, right? That would go to Ride, which certainly then be, you know, in front of the council, the mayor's office, stage two application next fall, and then if that all went, it'd be the voters next fall. So this is just like, if you like what you hear, you assign the homework for us to turn it in by February 14th.
Yeah, and that's the important thing, is that February 14th. And we do have, and I want to welcome Mayor Mutter and Council President Kinch, who are here, and Mayor Mutter will be able to speak a little bit about the bonding and all of that kind of information. But let's hand it over to Megan so we can start the finance. Oh, sure.
I apologize. Thank you. Just one question before we go into all of it, and just a re-clarification. What we're looking at tonight and what we're going to be approving are going to be related to their assessments or beginning the assessment process. It doesn't mean that this is going to occur. This is the fee just to build the assessment. It doesn't mean we're going into a stage two. It doesn't mean we're going out to the voters. It's just to say to the state, this is our stage one. We want to go and explore this and come up with information.
Exactly.
Right, just want to make sure that's.
Additional bond money, the additional 4 million, Mr. President Kinch, the council has to approve that, I believe. And then, of course, the voters will have to approve any additional bond work. So I'll hand it over to Megan, though, so she can talk on the finances.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. So first of all, thank you for having us. This has been a lot of conversations that we've all been having, so it feels good to be able to share this with everyone and just kind of put some of our thoughts out there and everything that we've been thinking to really benefit the Cumberland School Department. So as you have outlined, this is just the first step of the necessity of construction process, stage one. So if you recall, this goes back to just evaluating the need, and as we've identified the need right now, really impacts enrollment and addressing that within the district specific to BF Norton. And then in conjunction with that, we also are looking to take, this is a good opportunity to really evaluate the entire district and see what still needs to be addressed within. And some of the documents that we handed out today do capture some of the other items we're looking to address. As Mr. Torado mentioned, the high school roof is also in need of a full replacement. We also have some health and safety projects, also ongoing security projects. We have a handful of these projects that we're also looking to encompass within this new bond. Again, this is something that, you know, we're looking to study with your approval to submit a stage one application for us to further, you know, justify and clarify if this is required. So in terms of getting into the financial side of this, so there's a handful of documents right here. One of the main ones to look at, it is the one that has the chart on it. Sorry, the font's a little bit small. But when you're looking at this, what we wanted to capture was you've got capital improvement projects, what we just mentioned pertaining to health and safety, roof replacements, that we're looking to do across seven of the schools. So we've identified cost estimates associated with this work. You'll also see there's a line item for playgrounds. We're also looking to do some playground assessments at Cumberland Hill, Ashton, and Garvin as well. We also have the FFNE, Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Package, and then the IT package. So why you're seeing those is because, if you recall, as part of the original bond, the $83 million bond, that component wasn't approved as a reimbursable expense, which reduced our bond down to 79 million. And that's going to also translate into, you know, let's take this opportunity, get this new FFNE and IT as part of the new bond. So when you calculate in all of those costs towards the capital improvements, you'll see a number of roughly $16 million, okay? So keep in mind, $16 million for capital improvement. Again, these are estimate numbers. Now, as you saw so nicely on the board, the boards that Louis had put together here, you know, we're estimating at Ride's cost per construction right now, a new elementary school based on square footage, which is tied to enrollment numbers, that's estimating at about $50 million, okay? There's some big numbers, but what we have to also consider here is where we can look to leverage the funding that was already approved for BF Norton as part of the prior bond. So the MOA that was for BF Norton was $8.3 million. So we would take that off of your project totals from capital improvement as well as the new BF Norton. So that gets you to roughly a new bond to the town of 59 million. So this is where we also have to then factor in the reimbursement by the state. So you'll see here, participation rate at 38%. So that would be what the town of Cumberland would be responsible for, the taxpayers. So based on that percentage, it's roughly $22 million. So summary, for $22 million, we've got a brand-new elementary school that meets a lot of the district needs. You also have a significant amount of capital improvements being made across the district. There's a lot of really positive things and exciting things that can be done with this. Completely high level, a lot to be done to really have this plan come to fruition, but this is all part of the process we've been through many times. And the first part of that is to get in a stage one application, and, you know, that's why we're here tonight, is to go through what we have for you and look to move forward the next step, so.
Thank you, Megan. I just want to bring up one thing. I mean, we've talked in the past about, you know, the need for a lot of the roofs in the school district, and I know Alex has been banging this drum for many years, especially at the high school where there are technically, how many roofs are there technically? 12 separate roofs at the high school, various buildings, different levels. And the concern we always had was, yes, we had the bond issue, but we'd never had enough money with the bond to address the needs of the roofs because roofs cost so much money. And when you start doing that, of course, there's a lot of other work that's being done. But I will open it up to questions. Mrs. Feather.
Thank you. Just, so just for clarification, and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly because I might not be understanding it correctly. But the capital improvement project total of $16.8 million, that is kind of the things that we pretty much have to do to be within compliance. Is that correct?
To be in compliance, there are some deficiencies, yes, that we need to manage, and this is just bringing it up to code, so yes.
Bringing it up to code. So for about $6 to $7 million more, we would bring everything up to code and get a new school?
So your construction projects, so your construction projects tie back to your security vestibule, your security systems, elevators, that section, so that's your $7.9 million. Then you have to add a multiplier for your soft costs. And then from there, the cumulative total of your FFNE packages and IT for the three schools, that's where you total the $7.3.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
If I.
Yes. Yes. Sorry.
Thank you. That's what I was asking. You know, I love a deal, and I just. Capital improvements and a brand-new school.
Yes.
I'd just like, if possible, to add that the taxpayers may be wondering, why is this security issue coming up now? And if you recall, we had a focused security package done a few years ago that was when we did the entrance to the high school. That included other security upgrades that were needed kind of urgently. When we went to do the bond, the stage two for the current bond, Wright wouldn't let us include those because those had previous approvals. Now they're letting us do them, and so you'll be able to include those at this time.
Ms. Smith.
And just to clarify, the cost to the taxpayers, that participation rate of 38% is the estimated at this time. It's not a guarantee that falls out down the line with Wright, as we know, because I think we had high numbers when we went for the first approval for the bond, and then Ride's numbers were dropping, and then the town did pass the, unless it's 50%, we're not going to allow it to go forward. So these are numbers that are movable with the participation rate.
Yes, that is correct.
Anyone else have questions? I'll tell you what, I'm going to ask the mayor if he could just speak on the debt service portion, unless President Kinch looks like he wants. portion, unless President Kinch looks like he wants to say something first. President Kinch?
I want to clarify, when you asked me about the four million, if you remember, I know it got dropped to seventy-nine, but the council has already approved the eighty-three million. So I don't think we're going to have to look at the four million.
I'm sorry, you are correct. Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
What was the question, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sure everyone wants to know, how can we handle more, another bond and the increase to cost and what the cost to taxpayers might mean? And I know you don't have those kind of hard numbers, but I know that you know what our bond payments over the next several years are.
Yes, so, but the first thing, we, the, the eighty-three million that got, you know, got deducted to seventy-nine is now back to eighty-three, is still projected to be at the sixty-three point, close to sixty-four percent. So it actually is pretty much what, you know, what was advertised back then. The one point that, that is never mentioned is that you do have interest associated with that borrowing. And so to borrow eighty-three million dollars at four point three-one percent projection right now is about a hundred and fifty-five million. So there's seventy-two million of interest that's associated with that eighty-three. So I think when we had the, the joint meeting, you know, just on, on the debt service line, and, and, you know, I presented it as, so your debt service is basically, you know, for lack of better terminology, your town credit card, that's what we have on the credit card. And then there's an offset that's on the revenue side, which would be the, the housing aid. So when you looked at the projections, and there were some assumptions made that, that were conservative, so this is probably the high side. But when you added the extra expense and then you deducted the extra revenue that you were going to get, that one line item accounted for a one point seven million dollar increase in the overall town budget. And if you go down, get to the, your four percent levy and your fifty percent collection rate, effectively, that one line item would take, add a four percent levy increase would effectively take every dollar for it. There are other things that, you know, there were other revenues, so, so, I mean, but I mean, that's, that's a big hill to climb. And if you looked at it, projected over five years, you really needed to, to, to make that jump in FY twenty-four. In FY twenty-five, it, you know, you, you would have assimilated that into the budget. It wasn't, you know, it started, I don't have them, I think on the top of my head, I think it may have been, may have actually been, be less in the second year, maybe a small increase in the third year. But then there was a significant drop-off in the fourth year. So conceivably, if it was timed right, and, you know, all these things have to, have to get completed on time to get the reimbursement associated with it, or you're going to have a big hole, there is a, there is a possibility that if you time that right, and where the drop-off occurred was the time that you took the new debt on, you have a possibility of fitting it in there. But I don't have, I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying, I think that number is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-seven. So, now, you also have to understand that there are other needs. There are other capital needs that are, you know, there's road repair. There's some municipal buildings. There's other, and we are going through the process of kind of, we really have never, or for a long time, have never developed a really, you know, thorough capital improvement plan, which we are doing internally right now and anticipate in March to have like an internal charrette to kind of lay all the cards on the table. But, you know, if, and then the final thing, not that anybody would really want to, you know, execute this, this option, I don't think the president or colleagues there, you know, debt service is one of the, in full transparency, is, additional debt service is a reason to go over the four percent levy. It is, so that would be an avenue if the powers that be thought that that was a good idea. So.
Do you know, off the top of your head, over the next, say, few years, is there any significant, there's usually a drop-off of some debt service every couple of years, isn't there, from old debt service?
About the numbers that were reflected at the joint meeting?
Yes.
They're reflected in that.
Okay.
So if we, you know, there would have been a significant drop-off had we, you know, had we not added any new debt. But, but the, as the, the debt's dropping off, they are in the projections that were, that were presented that night.
And I'm sure nobody up here would really support a massive tax increase to pay for this, for anything, because, you know, we all live here, so. Any questions for the mayor? Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming tonight, too, and, and helping us out with all of the understanding of it all. You did mention, which I, I thought was interesting, too, is the timeline and how much time we have in order to get reimbursed and how we have to have projects done on time. So, right now, we have that five-year for the eighty-three million dollar bond that we did, that we have to complete all of our projects with the state and meet those guidelines. So how would we look at this? Do you know, I mean, would we just drop off? Would the state let us reallocate some of that eight million? Or would it go into that stage two and potential approval, and a new five-year window would open on that?
So some of that, I would probably need help with, but I would assume that if it was up to eighty-three million and you took eight or nine million out of it, you're still under the eighty-three million. So I don't think that's an issue. I think the timing aspect is, in some of the, the, you know, creative ways, we didn't, we didn't look at, you know, part of what I'm looking at is, instead of having this big drop and then, you know, this big increase and have, how could we smooth it? Could we smooth it a little bit? So instead of, because if you looked at FY twenty-three to FY twenty-seven, the, the increase was only three hundred thousand, but it went boom, 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 and then went drop. So is there a way to, to, to make that so that it's not like that? And could, you know, is it interest only for one year? Or is it, you know, people who are a lot smarter than me, who, you know, we have as fiscal advisors, there a way for us to smooth that? But there, there is debt that would drop off. And then if you were strategically wanted to fit it, because the reality is, you do not want to fit, you know, when you have a drop in your debt service, it would be, it would be very attractive to use that for operating expenses, but wouldn't be a really good idea over the long haul. But we all know that sometimes, you know, we make some decisions that we think we, you know, maybe we wouldn't make after, after a while. But, but that would be, if you could strategically smooth that out and, and give yourself that budget space right there, that fits into your normal debt service, you know, there's, there's your way to get to potentially what is, you know, being discussed today. That is, that, that's your best way without, because, you know, once it gets, it gets assimilated in the budget and it's, and it's, it's funded structurally, then if, if, if you filled it, you, there is no impact at all. Obviously, if you didn't fill it, you, you would then, could, could spend it on something else, but, but you would have that availability, if that makes sense.
Mayor Mutter, perhaps Mr. Kinch can answer this. So, when we get the projections or your designs back, so if we, when we, we get that, how soon does the council have to vote on a referendum for the upcoming, what's the deadline for getting it on the ballot for the fall? If we decide to pursue it?
So, we did, we actually had a partial of that discussion because the president, at the last meeting, brought up charter review. Is it, does it need to happen in February, I mean, in, in twenty-three? Would it, would it be a special election in twenty-three? Yes, yeah. I, is it, well, ideally, is it yes or ideally?
Yes, it would be. It would need to be in November as a special election.
Yeah, so I, yeah, the president, but I think the, you have to get that to the legislature by probably like June, I think at the latest, and then it has to go to the Secretary of State, the council has to approve the question. So, we did, you said we, you know, it wasn't about this issue, but we did touch upon it. So it would have to happen, you know, in the next probably three or four months. You'd have to, you'd have to make sure we, we get it on the calendar and, and get it through the General Assembly.
Mr. Torado, how soon will it take for you to get us, your designs?
So the deadline-
Michael.
Deadline for stage two submittal is the middle of September of this year.
So even if you, so if you got it by, you wouldn't be able, if we got it by the middle of September, you wouldn't be able to get it on the ballot for November, then?
It wouldn't make the ballot this year.
It wouldn't make the ballot this year.
You'd have to have a special election.
Okay.
A special-
All right.
So I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused on that. I, I, so you're, you're thinking of, I mean, you could have a special election any day, right? I don't think it has to be in November, but-
If I could, too, in most bonds, my experience has been, you don't have stage two complete before you already queue something up on the election sequence. You do that, as we talked about in the spring, council, state sponsorship, all that. Then stage two gets done typically in the fall. That's pretty common.
I believe that when we approved the eighty-three, we had just gotten like the first, the very preliminary work done, just to get it through into Ride, so.
I think that there's going to be, there's always trepidation on a special election, right? You know, especially when you're, you're looking to spend a significant amount of money. So you would definitely want to make sure that there was time to advertise, because, you know, we've seen it before, right? There'll, there'll be an accusation that, that, you know, on an off-year, you're trying to get some, so, and, so we need to be cognizant of that, too. You'd want to make sure that this was, you know, out there, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I would have, I would see, I would assume that we would have to have the same kind of campaign we had when we were doing the eighty-three million, town council meetings, school committee meetings, special meetings, going into neighborhoods, you know, really educating everybody what we were trying to accomplish at that time. But yes, to your point, I agree. We would have to make sure everyone was aware in town of what we were planning and what it would cost. Anyone else? Ms. Smith.
Actually, this may be more for the superintendent. Dr. Thornton, when we're looking at that and we're going to go and look at a four-track school, that's, that's like doubling the operating expenses and teachers and things like that, but yet our growth rate, if it's slower, are we going to find ourselves with gaps for a few years that we have to fill a budget in when we know it's so difficult with the budget already and we want to make sure that we can balance things correctly?
Yeah. I think to me, right now, it looks incremental as we're gaining state aid. As you know, state aid is going up around a million seven to a million nine this year, give or take. We have fifty-one more kids. The forecast is showing that trend to continue. So I think as we do get more capacity, more state aid comes in, I think it'll be incremental as it goes up, as I see it.
But that's across the entire town. I'm sorry. The numbers, the numbers that are here and what the state's projecting is across our entire town, across pre-K through twelve?
K to twelve.
K to twelve, okay, not including the pre-K, okay. So, yeah, so that, that's my concern, is that we have classes of fifteen students and we're in a four-track school and, and we bring the levels down so low, but we have more teachers and more expenses on that side. And have we already started to look at those numbers or thoughts about how that would happen? Because it certainly wouldn't match the incremental that the state's giving us. We're certainly going to be putting more towards one school-
I think I follow you now. So essentially, I think what you're assuming is, in year one, if we put a shovel in the ground for a BF in the summer of twenty-four, and it's a two-year project, let's say, twenty-four, twenty-five, right? You're assuming in day one of BF, it's fully loaded, all four tracks are loaded, you know, completely. That might be the case. You may be loading them incrementally. And it's, like, right now BF has some two tracks, some three tracks, right? Also, factor in the enrollment shifts as we put Ashton's wing online, we'll take some kids off of community and redistribute the population. So just like Garvin, we have Meadowcrest and south of Garvin, that could come and be a shift. It's a lot of different moves. I think you would see an incremental ramp up, just like we do now with schools.
Dr. Thornton, I would, I would assume also that, I mean, we've been talking about this for years, since we talked about the original bond, was after all the work was done, we'd have to really look at a full redistricting of the town to really maximize our dollars.
Right. And as you know, we have been doing that incrementally. We moved the forty-five-some-odd students last year from community to Cumberland Hill. But as I told a few of you in a few meetings a few months ago, the last thing I want to do is be the superintendent that says, after construction's done and everyone's gone, we need portable trailers to house our increasing enrollment. So I think we need to make sure we have capacity to keep absorbing the new numbers.
And I know some people have heard me saying this for a long time, but I have been concerned about making BF Norton a two-track school, which was the original plan for many years. The population increase that we've seen just doesn't really support that idea. And I remember a conversation that we had around eight or ten years ago. I remember having the conversation with Craig Duffy, who was on the school committee. And we were saying, if, if the population keeps going, we're going to have to build an entirely new elementary school. We won't have to do that. We'll just increase the size of BF now.
If I could also keep in mind, I know I mentioned this a few meetings ago, far as capacity, right now, we have less kids from, or going to BVP coming here. Currently, there's still around a hundred and thirty-some-odd kids in the BF Norton neighborhood that go to BVP, and around forty-one from Garvin. So if that trend continues, you can see that kind of number coming back on top of the increased enrollment.
Okay. If no one has any more questions regarding this topic, we'll-
Mr. Chairman, just, just one, one other, one other final thing that the, we are investigating. So the, the athletic field, there was some recreational bond money and I think open space money that was used to, you know, to, to do whatever improvements in that field. I believe it was in twenty-sixteen. So we, we are in the process of contacting bond council. So it's not a, it's not a, I don't think it's any bigger of a procedural issue, other than we may have to give the money back if we were to position the school on the field. But that is, there, that's, I just want to make sure-
Right. I believe that amount was two hundred thousand, which was about the same amount that they sold the, the old skate park to BVP for. If I'm not mistaken.
I'm not-
I'm not trying to make comments.
No, I'm not, no. I believe-
I remember that number.
I think it was a little higher than that. There were, there were two different sources and with some matching funds, so, but in any event, we're, we're, we're checking the box on that, just in case you were to-
Sure.
Move ahead, so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, President Kinch.
Absolutely.
Depth on, on the timeline. And I may have brought up a very good point about voter participation. This is a big ask. It is a, I think it'd be best to go to the following twelve months after the special in November, where you're going to take that issue right off the table and just bring it in front of a full election when people are out, there's a big turnout. However, with that said, I don't know if we're going up against some type of timeline or, or, you know, within the, the time.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great point. So I was going to add to that as well. So the stage one submission is coming up next week. It's February fifteenth. And then, as Louis mentioned, you've got the stage two deadline of September fifteenth. So you have two times that you can submit to Ride in one calendar year. So what this means is that you really want to take advantage of submitting them back-to-back. So we would need to do a special election for the bond referendum. So I will say, stage one is a lot of paperwork that we have to do. And, you know, this idea came up pretty quickly, and we were able to rally and get this all together. Stage two is a very heavy lift in terms of there's a lot of community meetings, there's a lot of educational program meetings, there's a lot that we get involved with to make sure the community is aware of what's being proposed. So, you know, we're talking heavily about stage one. There's also stage two that we can't forget, that, you know, we'll be looking to partner with you if you would like, but that's going to be the next big push. So we submit next week, but we can't stop. We really need to keep moving. So, you know, we're asking for approval of stage one, but we'll be looking to, you know, turn around quickly for approval of a stage two as well. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Can you speak to the reimbursements in the, in the window, the timeline? To President Kinch's question, if you went to FY twenty-four, what is the difference?
Yeah, so-
So the, the other concern is that Ride has had a deadline for sunsetting the bonus points that they would give you. So those additional twenty points, you would have to be under contract with a contractor by the end of this year, currently. I think they might try to move it six months longer, but in any case, it really benefits you to move on this immediately.
If I could just add, I just want to re-clarify. We're, we're discussing, if we do not do this for the new bond and we put it off for a year and to the regular election, and it did not pass, we've passed our window on the money that we would have had within the five-year under the eighty-three million, and we would lose a piece of that, points-wise and, and things. Is that, is that what you mean?
So two, two separate issues. The current bond, the few projects that, well, that are left to be contracted, those need to be contracted this year. We've spoken to the building committee, the facilities committee on that. But in order for you to get the twenty percent points on this possibly future bond, that has to start, that process has to start and really be settled this year and even under contract for you to be eligible for the bonus points. That's why you see many communities throughout the state scrambling to do this before that sun sets. sun sets. Bonus points. That's right. And, and the current bond is safe as long as we move to contract that out this year.
Which we will. So, we're not going to jeopardize, you know, the loss of any bonus points. But, I think to go back to answer our question before, so the prior bond, the, whether or not, you know, we choose to move, you know, BF Norton outside of the 83 million bond, that still is a five-year plan. This new bond starts a new five-year plan, okay? So, what's, in the past, remains unaffected from a timeframe standpoint, okay?
And again, this is all very, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, except that if we decide to not go under contract with BF Norton, which is in what we had planned in the five-year plan that we already have for the existing bond, then we could lose some pieces of it if we delayed going for a second bond? Or are we just saying, no, no matter what, both of them have to be done this year? We have to have both of our, like, everything under contract this year, whether it's under the 83 million or a potential new bond?
That's right. You just have till November to decide which way you're going.
Right. And it's important to remember that we do have a, a plan for renovation already. So, it would be a very simple process to get it under that window. Not simple, but very, I mean...
Yeah, but if we let it go and we didn't get it under...
Right. We would, we would definitely be able to get that done. Dr. Thornton, do you have, you want to get the last word on this?
That's a math question from Megan. So, Megan, if we, just to illustrate it, if we're at 62, then we're at 42, what's the differential, you think, in rough numbers, millions of dollars, that we would not be eligible for reimbursement for? If we wait till '24 and it's at 42%, right, versus 62?
I can reimburse that.
Yeah, reimbursement. I'm just trying to get a sense for, how many millions are we, is the difference between the two years?
I would, I would need my Excel sheet. I apologize.
I think it's, I think, am I correct? Sorry, it's just, not that I'm a math major. I leave that to the mayor. But if the cost of this building is $50 million, and if the building is not started, or whatever it is that you guys are talking about, getting the contractor assigned this year, and we lose 20% of the reimbursement, that's 10 million bucks.
So, keep in mind...
Tell me why I'm wrong, because I'm sure I am.
You're not wrong, but the timing of it. So, the timing of the new bond, you wouldn't need to have anyone under contract until the following year. So, I think there's a little bit of confusion. So, should we revert back to the original plans for BF Norton, we would absolutely need to have that contract under year 2023. Should this new bond move forward, we would not need to be under contract until the following year, 2024. New bond, new rules, new, you know, that applies to the following year, okay?
So, then when would a bond need to be approved or not approved, depending on what the voters do?
So, that would be the special, you know, the special meeting. So, typically in November, we would have that bond referendum. So, that would get approved...
November of '23.
'23, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I, I'm sorry, we're talking apples and oranges. The, the President of the Council was saying, can we do the election a year from now? And you're saying, no, not if you want the $10 million out of the 50, is what I'm hearing.
Not, not only that...
Doesn't mean that the building needs to be constructed.
Yes, that's...
Yeah. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not, this is not an advocacy piece. I'm trying to make sure I understand it as a lawyer for the school committee.
Sure.
You also don't want to lose, possibly lose the bonus points on the current BF Norton.
Mayor, President Kinch?
Yeah, just, just quick, and Louis might be able to help me with this. But who can move the deadline? Can't the legislature move the deadline? I mean, isn't it worth the ask to say, listen, this will be better for Cumberland?
It's sunset?
Yeah, right.
I, I think that happens.
Well, you know, we keep going to the well till they say, no more. I mean, this is a big move for us. And if it's just a simple ask to say, hey, listen, we can quadruple the voter turnout in the support for this if we wait 12 months, just by asking, can we move the deadline? I think it's worth the ask. And I don't know if that's a resolution required. I'll gladly join with anyone who wants to send it and send it to the, the right place to do that.
I agree. I also think we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves for tonight.
Yeah, but it's good to get these things on the...
I agree. And I think there's going to be a lot of discussions around that. I think the issue tonight is really just the presentation of the idea and us approving the, the necessity of the Stage One application. So, unless somebody has anything pressing, I would like to move on to discussion and our vote of the next item. Anyone? Okay. So, the next item is discussion and our vote for the Cumberland School Department to submit a Stage One necessity of construction application to RIDE on or before February 15, 2023, on district-wide capital improvements and/or new construction of BF Norton Elementary School.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Next up is discussion and our vote on altering the construction schedule for the balance of the approved $79 million capital plan contingent and upon school committee approving item number four above which we have just done. This would, of course, change the schedule for construction. BF Norton was scheduled to start this summer. That would be kicked back and Ashton would move into its place. Megan, I would let you actually give the detail.
I mean, you did a great job critique me up, so thank you. That's exactly it. So, we would have to accelerate the schedule for Ashton. So, we've got Ashton's Phase One new addition underway right now. Now, we need to tackle the interior renovation. So, with Ashton, we had them moving to the swing space. So, what we would end up doing is still move them to the swing space. We would look to have them move out prior to, you know, at the end of the school year, and they would start the fall of 2023 at the transitional space here. So, that would only mean that grades K through five would move here, and then the pre-K program would move into the new addition in the fall. So, you know, we wouldn't be vacating a brand-new building that we just got done. So, it actually would really house the pre-K program pretty nicely. So, they would be there for the entire following school year so that we could do an, a full renovation of the interior of Ashton.
Thank you, Megan. The other component to this is, because of the change in the construction schedule, it would allow the school department to replace the original start times for all the elementary schools, which would be, I believe, very popular among the entire town. So...
And can I also add?
Yes.
It would also help with the busing, I think, instead of transporting. I mean, it would buy us a year, but, you know, but transporting buses up from the valley up here is already, I think...
Exactly. In terms of the valley and busing, if you ever were to contemplate a new BF Norton, BF Norton could in theory not leave. They could watch out their window, the new construction of the building and the ball field. They wouldn't come up here at all.
Excellent.
Which, if you talk to Mrs. Vaughn over at Community School, or those teachers, the kids are absolutely loving the construction happening on that property and engaging with the construction crew themselves. So...
I'm sorry, if I can just add in one more thing, just for awareness. So, with accelerating the schedule for Ashton and with moving them to the swing space, we do need to give notice to RIDE. They require a six-month notice prior to relocating or, you know, displacing students and faculty to another building. So, this is something that we have to be mindful of. Should we move forward with this direction, we need to be communicating with RIDE very, very soon, so that they're aware of these plans. And so, again, we can start communicating out to faculty and the families and communities. So, again, six months notice.
So, at this point, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith? Oh, yeah, and I, I don't believe RIDE is going to give us that hard of a time. They want it, of course, for many reasons. But we would be making our decision right now, tonight. So, we would be able to move that. If there's no other discussion, I would ask for a motion. Ms. Smith?
Just, just to make sure we all understand it, too. Changing that around is really what happens with the Stage One, Stage Two, special election, anything like that. It's not going to alter it. Like, what we're doing here is saying, let's take the chance while we go and do the scope and review, and then let's just start and say, we're going to move Ashton next. We're going to forego the BF Norton and pending whatever may happen. Right. So, we're, all we're doing is flip-flopping both of them.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't really upset much, so, yeah.
Right, right. It's not as if we're moving Ashton because we're going to go start putting shovels in the ground on a BF Norton.
No, not at all.
I want to make sure that, yeah, maybe our audience out there in YouTube.
Mrs. Rogalsky?
I just want to confirm that if we were, and for the record, I think the plan sounds really good. I, I like the idea of the contin, the continuity of Ashton being done. And I don't really think it can hurt us. However, financially, I just want to make sure we're not going to incur any more costs by switching things around. Are we going to save any money by switching things around, by speeding anything up? I know anytime you speed something up, there might be other costs involved.
I'll say one thing. There's been some discussion about some delays at Ashton because of supply chain issues and everything. This would really help that timeline also. So, and asking about the, you know, the costs being increased or decreased. I don't think Megan even wants to answer that question, because who knows? I mean, it'll be all probably, it'll all probably, you know, play out in the wash. So...
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, when will, will we begin the process, assuming this passes immediately to notify the parents of the move next year? Ashton, for Ashton parents?
It would be this week.
All right, fair enough.
So, if I...
Go ahead.
If I can go back. So, will this be a decrease of the budget? I would love to say yes, but it's not. There's, you know, scope that, you know, we're looking to incorporate with the Ashton interior work so that it's matching to Cumberland Hill, to Garvin, what we're doing. So, you know, we're constantly evaluating the budget and seeing what we can do to, you know, stay within the budget as much as possible. The one thing that I also wanted to mention really quickly, with the transition of Ashton, the one real good benefit about BF Norton is BF Norton doesn't need to go to a swing space while construction is underway. They can stay in their current footprint while construction is in process, which is a, is a huge headache to avoid. So, that's a really good positive to how it's been laid out and designed. So...
Ms. Smith?
Just one more, because it did get brought up already, supply chain issues for Ashton. I thought that that was going to delay some of the use of that work going into 2023, the school year, the next school year?
I'll defer to Megan. I have nothing on that.
Not at this time. We've been working through any sort of supply chain issues that have come through and managing, you know, what, what comes our way. So, as of right now, we're good.
I think Ms. Smith may be...
I think you're thinking Garvin.
Oh, it's Garvin, the cafeteria. I apologize. Right.
Which would only be another situation like we had at Cumberland Hill this past year.
I just wanted to make sure, because I'm thinking, I remember hearing about that a few weeks ago, but you're right, it was Garvin. I'm so sorry.
So, would anyone like to make a motion to approve altering the construction schedule?
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Rogalsky, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. Next up is discussion and or approve to, I'm sorry, discussion and or vote to approve resolutions. First up is SCPR 02-0, I'm sorry, 2023-13, Garvin ES renovations project payment number three to H.B. Collins, which is a little delayed already. Motion to approve? Thank you, Mrs., Ms. Smith. Second by Mr. Collins. I'm having trouble with my handwriting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. Next up, SCPR 02-2023-14, Stage One Ride Submission, BF Norton ES, Torado Architects. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five to zero. And SC, now I understand why you have such difficulty with...
I never had difficulty.
Yeah. SC.
It's very smooth. I do like it.
PR 02-2023-15, Stage One Ride Submission, BF Norton ES Colliers.
Motion.
By Miss Feather, Mrs. Feather. Second by Ms. Smith comes in at the wire. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. And that is all of our business. Next up is public comment. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment? All right. Let me just say that I know that Sandy LaRivie, the principal of BF Norton, wanted to be here, but unfortunately, she is not feeling well. So, next up is a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Rogalsky.
Second.
By Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned at 7:12.